The Monday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty four, Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Anyone please stand. Deacon Rose, will you lead us in prayer tonight?
Turn to Father Lord, we come right now in the name of Jesus, oh God. This is the day, oh God, that you have made, we shall rejoice and be glad. And thank you, oh God, for this meeting between the mayor, the council, and the citizens of Inkster, Lord God, that should intervene in this meeting, oh God. Touch their minds, hearts, and soul, Lord God, and they come together on one accord, Lord God, and get the matters taken care of, Lord, everything put in place, decently in order, Lord God. Touch minds, Lord God, that be normally proched against each other, Lord God, that the council meeting go good, and they come together on one accord. How can two walk together, accept their agreement, oh God? Let everybody be in agreement, Lord God, you get the glory, and we get the victory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yes.
Black Pete, we're ready to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic under whose name is the nation, under God, in the best law, with liberty and justice, God.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Paul Timmchen.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge, excused. Councilwoman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilwoman Howard, yes. Councilwoman Richards, excused.
All right, thank you. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? We're adding Aaron Sims under presentation. Mr. Sims here. Anything else? Thank you, anything else to stand the same?
Yeah.
Any additions, deletions?
Nope.
Second. All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some will.
Shit.
Probably move the second discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Presentation, Mr. Sims, State Representative for Haley. Come on up, give the people some good news.
And, uh, my mom was, um, didn't exist.
And, 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 closer to the mic.
So, uh, so during the governor's award, uh, when we were down at Lansing, uh, we were asked, uh, what could the state of Michigan do to, uh, to help with the vacation house? So it said, you know, uh, how to work. Uh, so we get a phone call from our state rep, and he put in a request for the amount that Bob would be paid. So if you haven't been over to the house, um, the last part of the house that we're going out with, uh, I think we'll be going there, open, uh, uh, um, she was, uh, close to, uh, not, uh, well.
Get closer to the mic, get closer to the mic.
I'll get each.
No, dear.
So Aaron and I kind of ran into each other at the award ceremony, talked and with Arthur Edge, and discovered that, you know, historic windows are really expensive, uh, right? To get them preserved to the exact year from the time. So one of the things that we did was we just, you know, I know that in the budget, there were community museum grants, so caught, made a call and got this as a line item instead of having to go fight for it. Um, that being said, but why this is important to me, I just want to let you know, you know, I taught for seven and a half years, uh, but I also went to school in Michigan, and when I went to school, um, the way that American history was taught wasn't accurate, right? It was, uh, I'll just, I'll just be honest here, it was, it was whitewashed, and then it excluded some of the voices of our community. Um, so once I got into my role as a teacher, I honestly didn't use a textbook once because they were written by multimillion, billion dollar corporations, uh, that had agendas in place. We looked at primary source documents, diaries, um, uh, and so forth, and newspapers, et cetera. And I, I think, you know, Malcolm X is somebody whose history has been told incorrectly, um, by our schools over time. So the reason I jumped at this was this is a chance for us to tell that story ourselves, to make sure that we're telling the story accurately, and that we're celebrating it here in Inkster. So I just thank you for the work you're doing, and, you know, I, I'm just super excited about what this project's gonna look like.
Do we have a motion?
Some will.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes. Boards and commissions.
What are we supposed to be doing to fix this error?
Okay, so I'll explain it. Um, in our main meeting, it appears that the information, the records weren't being, they weren't updated just yet, all these terms expired, we. After a meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission took place, there was an overabundance of commissioners who were there to represent the same district. I got a call about it, and so did other persons as well. We looked back in records, we confirmed what the oath of office that was signed and authorized by the clerk stated, and it appears that Rory Malle, District Six, term does not expire till July of twenty twenty five. Um, as Anthony Dooley had been asked to serve in the District Six capacity because the paperwork at the time showed expiration for Rory Malle in District Six. So right now, we have vacancy in District Four, vacancy, I believe, in District Five, and if we don't, Councilwoman Howard correct us on that. After, we have a vacancy in the mayoral appointee, and now we have a floating commission who needs to be appointed to the correct district, and then the other vacancies need to be filled in the future. So that's why it says placed in our district. Wasn't anyone's fault, it's just the records are accurate now versus what they were in the past, as we're going through a transition. Yes, he needs to be appointed to the correct district. He is four. He's at four, but he's using four or the mayoral appointee. That's who you want. I can still get somebody else, um, he could go.
I'll nominate Stephen Anthony Dooley, uh, to represent the mayor's office. Get somebody, make a motion, I can.
Second.
Move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes.
That just leaves myself, I guess, Councilwoman Howard to find someone for our districts.
But any other nominations or motions for appointments?
I just want to say to the public, anybody who lives in District Four, that's south of Cherry Hill, north of Avondale, west of Staley, and east of Eastern. If you'd like to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission for the District Four, please let me know after the meeting, or any other boards and commissions that we have available.
Don't forget the construction and condemnation board. Everybody's supposed to come back. Oh, we, we had some folks for that last time. All right. You won't be getting started soon. Okay, ordinances, we have no first or second readings, readings? So we'll go on to new business?
Consider approval of summer birthday celebration, street closure, block party requests, July seventeenth, twenty twenty four, street to be closed, Princess Street, Cross Streets, New York, Yale, event time, two P M. to nine thirty P M.
Second.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing administration approval of contract for concrete, it's her restoration with Allson Sandwork Corporation, the regular properties, citywide from Water Main Breaks and Minor Road Works for three years with a three-one-year option. The contract bid was two hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. We are asking total not to be exceeded more than four hundred thousand dollars.
Move. Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes.
Consideration to authorize the City of Inkster to enter into a contractual agreement with the listed vendors to participate in the Inkster Neighborhood Stabilization Program twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, which will redevelop, rehabilitate, or close properties assigned through the first right of refusal.
You accept that.
Yet to accept property.
Good checks. Do we have a motion? So probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes.
Consider approval to submit public comment via city clerk's office within seventy-two hours prior to meeting will be distributed to city council members and kept in the meeting minutes on file in the clerk's office.
Move. Probably move the second discussion.
Was there additional language we needed to add into that motion? We talked about earlier orientation.
For those who are not present, maybe? Yeah, we're going to get open.
Oh, we're going to leave it open. I'll leave it open, okay.
But should we say that those who are not present at the meeting, the only apply is to those who don't come? Well, let's do it that way.
I wanted to do it that way, but I still think it's set into our vision, because it's a writing, that that can work.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing administration to approve the contract with E V M Utilities Incorporated for the E Outfalls C S O Elimination Project phases, two, three, and four, in an amount of twenty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, plus a six percent contingency of one million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents, for a total of thirty-one million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, twenty-five dollars and sixty cents for construction.
Some will.
Second.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes. Public participation. Dr. Phyllis Long.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. To the Inkster City residents, good evening to the Inkster City Council, to Dr., to Mayor Byron Nolan. Um, on behalf of a Journey with Lupus, which is a nonprofit lupus support group, we just wanted to say thank you to the Inkster community. We want to say thank you to the Inkster City Council. We had our open house, July thirteenth, this past Saturday, and it was a success. The community came out, the Inkster City Council came out, and I just wanted to give the Lord a hand praise for, if one person had to come out, it would have been a success to learn about lupus, lupus symptoms, lupus terms. We had games, we had prizes, we had raffles, we had, um, refreshments, hot dogs, pop, different things like that. But the important thing is that knowledge was gained, knowledge was gained about lupus. We had one game, it was a, uh, multiple choice, and it was only ten questions, but I asked, how many got ten right? And nobody got ten right. How many got nine right? Nobody got nine right. How many got eight right? Nobody got eight right. I think the most was five. Somebody got five questions right. So that lets me know that lupus awareness is important. People need to know about lupus, because out of all the people there, out of only ten questions, nobody got all ten questions right. So I just thank the Inkster community. I really thank the, uh, Inkster City Council for taking time out of your busy schedule. You had other things to do with just remembering us on that Saturday, just to see you guys come walking through. It was, it was really, uh, just heartwarming. It was like my big brothers and my big sisters were coming through to be with us. And when the, um, mayor came in, it was just really, it was exciting, he had words to say. So we just thank you once again for taking time out of your busy, busy schedules, for the Inkster community taking time out of your busy schedules to come and be with us, and causing our open house to be a success. So we do plan on, we want to do it every year, like as a picnic type of occasion, but we just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Dr. Shanita Jones.
Shatina Jones, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. How you gonna mess my name up? As much as we talk, how you gonna mess my name off? It's so good to see everyone. I am coming to you all tonight for a couple of different things. So, um, I am a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Society Incorporated, I am the president of A Toyota Omega Chapter, which is located here in Inkster, Michigan. And we know that we got a lot going on in November, and there's some things that we are definitely going to need some help with, um, in terms of partnering with yourself to either potentially come in and have some conversations about what's on the ballot. We have a national charge to get individuals to the ballot. So I know sometimes when if it rains, we not gonna vote, if somebody don't come pick us up, we not gonna go vote. So we are looking to, uh, increase voter engagement, not just here in Inkster, Michigan, but in Western Wayne County. We also want to do a lot more of voter education. So there's some things that are coming. Um, if one candidate wins over the other, and there's a lot that folks don't necessarily know. Um, so we're going to take the next four months to put it in overdrive, um, and have conversations with our, not only Inkster residents, but in Western Wayne County. Um, so just wanted to come here and ask for you all's support in that. I know I can get a hold to the mayor, but everything else, but just in thinking about with our community members, I know a lot of you are, because we've worked with some of y'all already, if you're interested in partnering us, please, um, email us, um, that will be great, or just reach out to me, I'll be here, I'm typically here, um, and we'll have our flyers at the next meeting. So just wanted to put that out there and let you all know that, um, we have a lot of work to do before November. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jones.
That was something I was going to speak on tonight with everything that's going on. I think, uh, maybe we can't all get together, have a forum or something, um, to educate people what's going on, because a lot of people don't read the news, they don't look at T V, uh, and get the word out of what's going on, you know? Don't necessarily care who you vote for, but just know the difference between which one you want to, um, especially like Project Twenty Twenty Five.
It's on right now.
Right. A lot of people don't know what's going on in there. Everybody should at least get a chance to read that. It's very interesting.
And digest it, because it's nine hundred pages, and I don't know about y'all, but I'm not reading nine hundred pages.
I'm not reading, no, I'm not reading it either, but that's very important. Also too, how can we get, uh, some of our seniors from Inkster that could potentially be new voters? How can we get them signed up? We have to go to schools, I'm not sure.
So we are signing folks up, we have been signing people up.
High school soon, yeah, yeah, seniors. There's potential, that's eighteen years old, at, in November, and they can, you know, be, uh, new voters. So how do we get to them? Because I know they don't.
So we have been in Robesaw High School already registering for voters, so that's some of the things that we're doing. We're looking at collaborating with all the other organizations, organizations within Inkster and outside of Inkster. One of the things I know is that we have some good solid organizations in Inkster. So how can we come together and do this work together? We also have a national initiative that was just, um, rolled out last week at our conference called, um, Take Four in Twenty Twenty Four. So we're challenged with taking at least four people, um, with us to the polls, so we're going to figure out logistically how, how that works. We do know that we, we have an amazing, um, senior population, but then also, how do we get them the education about absentee voting? If they're not able, like, mobily able to get there, how can we do those things? So that's what we're working on now, and we will have all of our stuff to you within two weeks, because we had to pivot a little bit from what we were going to do. So would love if you all would like to get together and do a forum, because one of the things I know is, I'm from Detroit, right? Um, I have a college education, but everybody doesn't, but even with a college education, sometimes I can't understand this jargon that is there, and I don't want none of my people confused. Um, so if you gonna vote one way, or if you gonna, if you know what this is, I want everybody to be on the same page. Access is important. Um, so we definitely can bring this back to you all at the meeting on the twenty-ninth, and make sure we have something together for you.
All right, thank you.
What's my email? My email is S H E T I N A M J O N E S one nine zero eight at gmail dot com.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
James Skrill Erberhart, Junior.
Peace, peace, family, uh, city councilman mayor. Um, just here to get some updates. Um, I wasn't able to attend the last city council member, I was still out of town, I was stuck in Atlanta, uh, from the Forbes B L K Summit, uh, but we had a great event. Uh, a lot of keynote speakers came out, shared their testimony, uh, shared their success with inside of transitioning from entertainment to business. Um, a lot of political conversations with Stacey Abram as well, uh, happened. Um, if anyone who want to see a recap of that event, they can go on Forbes B L K dot com, um, and access a recap to this whole event. But I wanted to also, uh, get some information out to the community, uh, with the youth. If you have any, uh, children, uh, my organization, Motivating Inner New Dreams, uh, has partnered up with Black Tech Saturdays, uh, for their supplemental events, uh, outside of the Michigan Central, uh, New Lab Space in Detroit, where it's an innovation center. Um, and we will be at Michigan Central Friday with Google Code Next, uh, from twelve to three for a youth program on hip hop and tech. So we'll be teaching the kids on how to utilize technology, uh, with coding to create music, um, with a couple of my partners, another Inkster native, uh, Keith Miller, who's a platinum producer, double platinum producer, uh, that made music for Lil Wayne, G Z, um, and he's the Inkster native as well. Uh, so we'll be at Michigan Central, that address is two thousand and one, Fifth Street, Detroit, Michigan, four eight two two six. Um, and then the following day, on Saturday, July twentieth, it'll be an all-day event, um, in Laurel Park Mall on Six Mile Road at Taker's Gaming Vault. Um, this is a gaming facility for the youth as well as adults. Uh, we'll be there from twelve to four thirty, family programming, this is a free event. So if you have some youth that's interested in gaming, they can come out and game for free. We have PCs, Xboxes, and PlayStations, all brand new, a state-of-the-art facility. And then from seven to twelve at night, that is twenty-one and up. So if you have some, uh, adults that's interested in gaming, this is a free event as well, and we partner with Black Tech Saturday, and Detroit is digital as well, um, for this event to bring awareness, um, to esports and the technology aspects of coding in our hip hop community.
Flyer, can you also share?
Yep, so we do have a digital flyer, um, I'll share that with you all as well, um, that's what I'm reading from, we just got this today.
Hold on, that's the next thing on the website.
Yep, and then I'll be updating the website, motivatinginnernewdreams.org, uh, tonight, I'll be updating that, and that information will be on the website as well.
Xavier Smith.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council residents, um, glad to be back in another city council meeting. Of course, you guys know that thanks to Task Force Farmers Market is in effect, this year, the market is a shorter term because of funding, so our last day will be September the fourth. So we wanted to ask if we were able to place some yard signs, um, on Michigan Avenue along the corridor, so that they can stay there for the duration of, um, the farmer's market. And we wanted to announce that our youth day will be on Wednesday, July the thirty-first, and our senior day will be on August the fourteenth. So we're asking everyone to bring out their youth on it, well, every week you can come out, but especially bring our youth on the thirty-first, and our seniors on the fourteenth. Also, I just sent around a flyer for the City of Inkster's sixtieth birthday party celebration. Um, the date will be on November the second, at the Bliss Event Center, right on Cherry Hill. So again, we do have tickets, we have these little, um, reminder cards, so you guys can get these and put it on your refrigerator, put it wherever, so we can all have a good time and celebrating the City of Inkster's sixtieth birthday. Um, it is from six to nine, and the tickets are fifty dollars in advance and sixty dollars at the door. Along with this, we also will be having a souvenir booklet, um, and those prices should be coming to you via email really soon, um, if they, if you have not received them already. So we're just getting ready to have a good time, and just, um, we will be having our second, um, technology training starting August the twenty-fourth, uh, with Inkster Chamber of Commerce, so if there's any new small businesses, or anyone who's an entrepreneur who's looking to start a small business, uh, please contact Inkster Chamber of Commerce, so you can go ahead and get everything together. Um, so do anyone have any questions while I'm up here at this time? For any of those, the task force of the chamber? Well, thank you all for listening, and this is also open to the audience as well. I mean, if you are a young person or older person who would like to start a new business, uh, we will be having those classes to get you all prepared. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Kate Henderson.
Good evening, family, y'all looking good.
Good evening, family. Y'all are looking good as usual and all that, you know? Say that. Well, anyway, I want to keep going there. Our, our, our publication cleanup. I know last month we had a little problem with the dumpster and all that. No, but we should be okay this month all the way to October. Uh, okay, the twenty seventh of July, the dumpster should be out. Okay, well, our location, of course, our main location, Boca Dozer, Red Complex. And that's where we have sign in sheets. You know, have, we'll have, you know, water, coffee, you know, that's about. We have sign in sheets. Saying that if you've got an area you want to, uh, clean up and if you need a pickup after you clean up and all that, sign in the sheet and all that and. Oh, oh, true blue out there, you know, truck, I'll pick it up. Anyway, okay, our location is okay, Westwood Park and that's on Strowman. That's, uh, all right. And then we got, uh, okay, uh, okay, Penn, Penn, uh, Penn Park. That's on the, uh, excuse me, Wheatley Park and that's on, uh, you know, Penn Street and, uh, Lamont on Pine Street, those other locations. So I. I want to thank y'all for, you know, I thank the city that's look, look, looking cleaner, you know, because I, I think the interest is gained, you know, that. Then together we can, you know, so that and I hope them out, outside fools to be running up and down there for different locations, stop throwing their trash. And I find trash with people's names and all that different communities. You know, that ain't right. That ain't right. So, but anyway, uh, I love y'all and, uh, we go, we gonna be all right.
All right. Sabrina Lawrence.
Hi, Sabrina Lawrence. I am the director of the. Here come for you guys. The mission was on Asian, approved to build our new senior center. And we're asking that two mills be placed on the upcoming ballot. For the upcoming operating cost of the building as our current spot is in kind by the City of Inkster and the recreation center. Have the money to build our center, but we would like to see if, um, the two mills to operate our building. Here.
Thank you. Sandra Watt.
Good evening, Mayor Inkster.
Good day, dear.
Um, I have a couple of things I'd like to, uh, address tonight. And, uh, first of all. I'm experiencing a, uh, make it make sense to me moment. I have for the past two weeks. I need this council to explain the decision to continue to do business with a mender. That has no respect for our laws, rules and regulations. That has failed to honor his contractual obligation to the city. And is currently in litigation with the city after illegally opening a, uh. Marijuana facility in violation of an established ordinance of operating within five hundred feet of a daycare center. Make it make sense to me. How leadership chooses to do business with an entity that obviously has no respect for the city and its residents. Make it make sense to me how we enable and provide part of the necessary resources of this entity. To continue to disregard our city. Make it make sense to me how the money we received. Last year from this person, and I believe it was around thirteen thousand dollars. Is less than one percent of the city's budget. Was that ample compensation to relinquish our dignity? It is my understanding that the council implements the will of the people. I have yet to talk to a resident that agrees with your decision. You're supposed to be the voice of the collective. You are not elected to do what you think is best. But you do not possess the knowledge, experience or business acumen. And believe me, this city is a business. To do more than represent the will of the people. Nothing should happen up there that is not the will of the people out here. Nothing, um, your decision regarding Midwest recycling contract, among other questionable judgments, has greatly impaired. Impaired my ability to, um, believe you have the best interests of your constituents. When this occurs, when leadership fails us, we as citizens have to stand up for ourselves. Uh, when leadership cannot or will not or is incapable of doing so. You must step up and say what's necessary to happen. No one. So I would urge the community to voice your disagreement with this travesty, travesty by refusing to utilize the recycling bins. You have to remember those bins have our name on them, so our logo on them. But this person is, uh, disregarding us, period. But he's utilizing us to continue, uh, to disregard or disrespect us. And the best way to revo- to voice your displeasure is to not patronize something. You need to boycott Midwest recycling. Um, and the second thing I wanted to talk about, when you were talking about the voting. I wonder if any of you are aware that Connie Mitchell has, uh, been a member of the League of Women, Women Voters. Um, for quite some time now. And she just recently had Inkster inducted or a chapter here in Inkster. So when you're talking about raising the votes, these are established organizations. And now Inkster has its own chapter. You're welcome to join that as well as use their resources to contact voters and things of that nature. So, and she's also an AKA. So, uh, she fills both the bills that you were talking about there. Where that's concerned. So I would urge people to start joining the Inkster chapter of the League of Women Voters. Or get in touch with Connie Mitchell for that effort. That's it.
Will Miller.
That's funny. Mayor Council, family in the back. Good evening to everybody. Uh, my name is Will Miller. I am currently coming to you currently as a member of the Inkster. Housing Commission. Um, wanted to invite everybody out this Saturday. It's going to be our third annual. Uh, Resident Appreciation and Safety Day. Uh, we have a nice party for everybody over in Lemoine Park. Um, Pining and Middle Belt. So we asking folks, if you haven't been to one of the other two. Um, to come out, this was going to be bigger and better than the previous one. Uh, we're going to have giveaways. Um, stuff for, uh, bikes for kids, we're going to have food giveaways. It's going to be, it's just going to be a good time. Music. It's going to be a party. So we hope everybody can come out, have a good time with us. Um, I say it's third annual. It's going to be from noon to five. July twentieth, Saturday. Other than that, I'm generous with the check. I'm real proud of them brothers. They didn't work a long, long time. You know, for that to, to, to make, to make, to bring that into fruition. So God bless them brothers for all they went through and the perseverance they didn't show to keep that going. So. Other than that, thank y'all, everybody. Appreciate it.
Pastor Jean Opel.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to use all of the time that we have from the clock that no one used so far.
Right, right, right.
Actually, I'm doing a presentation at the next meeting, but I want to make sure that. I really lift up what's happening with Operation Refuge and our opportunity to turn. Our Ted Ellis experience into the same thing that happened for Detroit with the NFL draft. So when you talk about culture and you talk about the things and thank you, man, for, um, bringing in Black Tech Saturday, I'm very engaged and involved. But when we think about culture and how do you say who you are and how you're represented? When I say Van Gogh, then you know priceless. When I say Monet, you think priceless art. But how many of us can think of anyone that's a black artist that we think priceless? This is how we lift our culture is when we bring value to what's important to us. So on August the twenty third and twenty fourth, Ted Ellis, his work is in the White House. He's renowned. He has sold millions of dollars in art, but we don't know his name. He is coming to Inkster. And I am so proud today to announce that Ballmer, yes, Steve Ballmer, is our presenting sponsor. So we're talking big for Inkster. Now, how do we really value and lift this up ourselves? So I want anyone that's interested in supporting this to get ahold of me and let me know. What is really happening is going to be amazing and I want Inkster to be a big part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
After you, man.
Oh, what? Uh, Madam Clerk.
Um, in the clerk's office, as of today, July fifteenth, we have sent out one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight ballots. From the. But. We've only received back a hundred and thirty-three. So if you have your ballot, please turn it into the clerk's office. And also District Four and Four Two and Five ballots are still coming out today and tomorrow.
Yep. All right, hey. All right, City Treasurer, I have announced that we do have a new city treasurer. His name is Dan Carrington. A lot of you are already familiar with, so excited to finally have our treasurer on board so we can move forward. All right, State Representative Wagaely, you got an update for us?
Hear me? Okay. Um, yeah, so a couple of things. First off, um, the look, um. For the person who came here talking about lupus, thank you for what you're doing. Um, I don't share this very often, but I feel like I should today. Um, three, four years ago, I was diagnosed with fibromyalgia, not lupus, but it is also a chronic illness. Um, it's something that I, I do every year is, is get a, um, resolution passed in Lansing. Um, not, it's not a life threatening disorder. It's, it's, you know, just causes widespread muscle pain, fatigue, et cetera, sleep disturbances. But I, I've learned to live with it and this is honestly the perfect job for it because the busier I am, the less, um, I think about. Uh, the conditions I got to live with. But, um, so awareness on these things is super important. Um, as you all know, uh, we pass budgets at the end of June. Um, want to talk about this for a second because. These budgets passed fifty-six, fifty-four. That means they were party line votes. That means that if not every member of, uh, the Democratic Caucus in the Senate and the House voted for these, they would not have passed. And, you know, I, I, we presented earlier securing eighty thousand dollars. I know, uh, Senator Polhanke came by and, and talked about how we secured, uh. Nine hundred thousand for the Inkster, uh, rec roof. And, you know, the thing is, I, I think as we move forward in these, um. This political space, recognize, uh, who's in control in Lansing, uh, means something for the City of Inkster and for our district. I'm just proud of the work that we're doing there. Um, on that note, I'm having a coffee hour. Uh, this Saturday in Inkster. So we're in the, what's called the blackout period in Lansing. So I can't communicate, uh, via text or. Uh, email or, or mail from my state office. So people in this room, hopefully you can help me spread it throughout the community since I can't use my office to do so. Um, but we're having a, um, coffee hour, eleven AM at the library, uh, this weekend. So if you want to come learn more about the school budget, more about the state budget and some of the things that we're working on, please come out there. Um, I'll just mention there are four pieces of legislation that my office is working on right now. I'm hopeful, uh, to get a committee hearing on one of these and I just got some good news on that front. So we're, we're getting closer. Um, but one is, uh, what it would do is it would make, uh, essentially we're trying to discourage, uh, the use of deception tactics on minors. Uh, by the police. So, uh, think Central Park Five, think, um, uh, essentially right now under Michigan law. Uh, police can, can, can lie. They can say they have evidence that they don't have, uh, to the youth. And what this causes is it causes a, an increasingly high false confession rate. Um, so I've been working with the Innocence Project and the ACLU at Michigan, uh, on this legislation. Um, that has passed five or six other states. It actually passed unanimously in Utah of all places. So I think this is something that has legs and hopefully we can move forward to make sure that we're protecting our kids and our community. Um, and that their rights are preserved, uh, during the legal, legal process. Um, the other piece of legislation we're, we're working on is the, trying to require employers to post. The rights for unionization in their workplaces. I had a nurse reach out to me who was organizing their, a union drive. And, uh, their employer used a bunch of different union busting tactics. So the hope with this piece of legislation is to spread awareness on what your rights are under the National Labor Relations Board. Um, the other one is where my office will be, uh, introducing a minimum wage increase bill. Um, the hope is by, and before I say the number, remember this is twenty thirty, so imagine what inflation will do. But my hope is that we get something that's closer to a livable wage. We're going to be introducing a bill to raise it, uh, to twenty dollars by twenty thirty. To me, if you work full time in this country, uh, you should be able to survive, plain and simple. My first job was at Taco Bell. Um, it was one of the most grueling jobs I ever had. I don't know if anyone's worked, uh, fast food in the room. Uh, it's not, it's not easy work. It is dignified work and it is necessary work. Um, and the last one is while knocking doors, I ran into a, a gentleman. Um, who's legally blind, uh, but got married. So he lost his disability benefits because the state of Michigan, we have a very low. Uh, asset limit for disability payments. So we're looking to either raise that or eliminate it altogether. Making the argument that if you are disabled, you should still receive your benefits regardless of if you're married or not. Um, and regardless of if you come from a rich family or not, because everyone deserves the dignity of contributing to their family. Um, essentially centering our legislation on things to help working class people in our district and hoping to get some of that moving. Um, and I'll leave you with this and sorry, I, I usually like to keep things short. Um, but our, uh, phone number for the office is five, one, seven, three, seven, three, three, eight, one, eight. And our email is, uh, my first and last name at house dot M I dot gov. That's D Y L A N. W E G E L A at house dot M I dot gov. Um, and the last thing is as I've been, um, door knocking, I, I get asked, um, well, I've been trying to spread awareness. We passed, uh, proposal two last year, which we implemented in Lansing. I'm the vice chair of elections up there. So we have nine days of quarterly voting. Um, I've been trying to, uh, make sure that people are aware that nine days prior. Uh, they can go in person and vote. And I was just curious where Inkster's was going to be so that, uh, when people ask me, I know where to tell. It'll be just at City Hall. Great. Appreciate it. Um, and, uh, any questions for me today?
Any questions, Sid, what? Nope.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Forgot to mention in public comments, we did receive a public comment in writing. That have been filed. We'll be distributed to the city council in part of the minutes, uh, at the next meeting. Mr. Bradford, I think you said we skipped you. You were late. Come on up here. Come on up. He was late, y'all. Just want y'all to know.
There comes a times in all of our lives where we must repent. This is that time. Uh, I'm sorry and I apologize. I, when you get to be sixty years old, you, your sight kind of fades a little bit. I signed the wrong document. I am sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I went. I can't. Um, I'm here, uh, on behalf of, uh, Robesaw High School. I'm here with one of the greatest persons in the world. Gay Johnson. She is, uh, also a, a, a person that graduated out of that system. And we have what we're coming up on our tenth year anniversary of having fun in the park over at Tyron Wheatley. Eleventh, I'm sorry, the eleventh year. Uh, what we're here to do, uh, in front of you, uh, Mayor and Council, is to simply ask. Uh, we have our application in and we have, uh, the request for us to be able to have. Uh, permit to be able to be inside the park on the thirty-first of this next month, uh, August. Uh, we know that Inkster High and Robesaw was very competitive in the day, but we're too old for competitive stuff now. It's all about having fun.
I didn't hear.
Oh, okay. It sounds like a, a, a few diehards are still in the audience. So what we're going to do is have a kickball session where we can participate. In some, uh, good fashion, fun. Uh, we're going to do that in the park this year. Uh, we're going to just ask if we can get the support. From the, uh, mayor, the council, probably on that day, if you allow us to have the permit to come in and have fun. Uh, if you guys would stop in on that Saturday and just enjoy that day with us. Um, our children are now looking at us, uh, trying to find out how they can be. Uh, people who are in Inkster who participate and have, have fun with each other. Let's show them. Uh, on a more mature level, how we can get together and have fun. We're also going to be doing this in a bubble when Inkster High is going to do theirs. I take my camper over there. I, I camp out on Inkster High's ground. And I have fun with them, you know? They're my cousins and people that I had fun with growing up, you know? So I'm just asking, uh, if we can, I'm together on that day. And I don't know if my colleague, he'd like to say something.
could like to say something?
Please show up, Mayor, you have some fun. I might have something for you if you should.
Can we play kickball? Can we play?
Are you 60?
Not quite.
No, we're welcoming you guys to come and have fun. We're going to have, we're going to bring food into the area and just be able to have you have a nice meal, and enjoy yourselves.
All right, sounds good. Look forward to it.
And usually, I'd like to say also that Jerome Bivens cannot be accused of letting any balls drop. He's always supported us, he's always helped us, and he's always on time with helping us with cones to section off the street over on Penn Street, and we're just hoping that we can still use some of the.
It's Jerome Bivens?
Always very high in what he does, helping us. We appreciate him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. See, Pete? Councilwoman Howard, what you got?
I have nothing at this time.
On your way out. The councilwoman Scott.
Just want to say that I had a great time at the lupus event. I did learn a lot. I was one of those people who got five, right, you know, pretty, did get a little bit more right, so we'll start that on the record.
Finish it.
But I did learn a lot, and then I also went to the Troopers event. That was a great event. My godson had so much fun, there was a whole bunch of activities for the youth. It was great, because I got to meet not only our officers, but the state officers stopped me and councilman Rutledge and kind of explained us, what they're doing in the city, so it was nice to kind of all come together. Oh, and then shopping there.
Right.
Ms. Davis, what's going on?
I saw you guys go up outside, I think you were there going to answer the question about insulation of my height, because I got born at 16 years old, this is dapper, and not, not flushed, my heart kept everything what we're done in like a number of years, and I also have until here that 74, except I was 29, so my water bill was, again, 92 equals 12, that is $20, $20, $70 for water, and sewage, 77, and I don't know what's happening at all, it's the wind stuff that's going through.
You can talk to Ms. Bivens, the rate just changed, so I'm sure that's last month's bill.
It changed, 71, 24, 25, $70 for water, and $18 for sewage, and 24 and 6, $36,000 for water, and 70 for $70 and 77 for water, so it might be, it's, we have $70, we have $70, and, forget that, I took.
Sounds like it's estimated, then. Mr. Bivens can explain to you, it's an estimated bill, it's not an actual weedy.
Oh, I know that. I point they do, people ain't got, you know, that, you know.
So what you, you zero?
I need to know where this, my height is going to be, it's one over on Carmile, it's one, my own, the whole recreation field, that's teared open, like somebody in the field, but I want to want it right at my house, that's all y'all believe, responsible for my house, it is bad.
Okay, I mean, when we get back to you, we have a staff meeting tomorrow, we'll go over to the staff meeting to get actual timeframe of when we're going to get to your area to fix the fire, replace the fire.
Yeah, I was thinking that one new one, or one of, new bike, one of the north side, and that's the only one.
Make sure you leave your number with Jerome, we'll call you once, oh, Carrie's going to give, okay, sounds good. All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. Oh, what? Where we at?
You're ready now.
Councilwoman Bivens, got anything? Uh, no, nothing for me at this time. Mayor Prother?
Oh, no, not this time, I was the first one, not this time.
You're not the mayor prother.
Oh, shoot. I just said, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Just real quick, this past week, I believe we had a session, planning session for the master plan update, so I just wanted to let everybody know about that, and that the survey is online, so please make sure that you fill that out so you can give your input if you can't be in person at the next one. I do believe the next one is going to be the same night of national night out, and they'll have information over in the park, August 6th, that is, the night of the primary and national night out, so we got a lot going on that day. So, yeah. And then Cold Red, I have about six to 10 people I need to sign up tonight, if there's anyone else in the crowd who wishes to sign up for Cold Red, please see me after the meeting. A resident had quoted to me as well that when there's false information going out on Facebook, and I've been doing my best to try to correct it regarding like priority waste and other things like that, and we're, I'm offering to sign people up for Cold Red, they're changing the subject. And fact of the matter is, they don't want to, I guess, be alerted, I don't, maybe they don't understand, so if you would like to continue receiving updates, or I'm sorry, get updates if you're not getting them, whether it's text messages, phone calls, or emails about coming meetings and other things happening in the city, please feel free to stay after the meeting, so I can get you signed up, or take your information out so we can take care of that for you. And that's it for now. Oh, this weekend I did attend some of the events as well, it was jam-packed. Hope you all were able to get out, and look forward to the future ones that are coming up. Thank you all for what you did over the weekend in supporting those efforts.
Good. All right, real quickly, summer camp has started, we survived our first week. Everybody, I'm talking about the adults, the kids. Kids have a good time. So if you guys are out and about during the day, Monday through Thursday, stop by, see what our kids are doing, see what activities they're working on, and we have a field trip coming on last week of this month, anybody wants to chaperone, feel free to volunteer, I think we're going to Great Lakes. Clinton, we're going to Great Lakes, it's an arcade out there, and something else, boy.
The chapter?
Sea light, sea light, yeah.
What's that, O'Reilly?
Great Lakes, yeah. Oh, no, no. You can go type. But we need some volunteers to go with our kids, we got about 90 kids in the program.
All right, that's good.
More on a sad note, Tony Lacy's passed away, he was one of the original Funketeers. Channel 4 WDIV came out today and interviewed the other Funketeers, I think it ran on the news, I didn't see it, but I think it read on the news. Huh? And another sad thing, we, I don't know if you guys know, we had a seven-year-old boy who was shot. We really, we probably, Commander, we need to, Fargo, we need to get someone to come update folks on firearm safety. There's been some changes in the laws, I don't want to speak on that situation, obviously, because they're investigating it still, but there's been a lot of changes in the laws, we have to keep our firearms safe, especially when you're around children. This didn't have to happen. Luckily, right now, he's still alive, he's in critical condition, so send out a prayer for him, just shouldn't happen, seven-year-old shouldn't happen. And two, I hate to comment on this, but you probably need to, our country, something's wrong, we're going down a slippery slope now. People are trying to assassinate political candidates, everybody's talking recklessly, dangerously, because if they don't get their way, they want to hurt somebody else. We got to regroup. We cannot allow this to continue, this mindset, thinking this is okay. This is crazy. I was at an event yesterday, I'm looking out back behind my head, everywhere, I mean, you know, it shouldn't be like that, so please just start thinking about that, start talking to folks, because we have a difference of opinion, or a difference, different political party does not make us enemies, and I do not want something bad to happen to.
Right. It's the thing, it's the thing, to that village.
Oh, yeah, the village, oh, Sabrina came up and asked, let me explain, the seniors want to add two mills to the ballot, it'd just be a ballot question whether the residents want to increase the millage by two mills to take care of the operating expenses of the new senior wing. So what council, we've discussed, and I think we're going to do, we're going to publish it this week, the next meeting, it'll be the first reading, in order for us to meet the August deadline to get it on the ballot, we will have to call a special meeting the week after that. I think that's on the 12th. First meeting is on the 5th, special meeting, if we decide to call it, which I think we will, be on the 12th, so we can vote on that and get that on the ballot, so the residents can decide whether they want to pass that millage. So I was approached last Friday with it, I think people in council will contact, so we're going to try to move forward, do what we can, at least give that option to you so we can take a vote on that. If I have anything else?
No.
That'd be two, I think, on this ballot.
That's true.
Oh, no, November election, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. November, general election.
So, senior, yes, 25.
Yeah, it'll be two separate millages, but we'll get more information out so people won't get confused, so we'll all know exactly, we'll all be on the same page, you know what we're considering. I don't have anything else? Am I missing a jar?
So, both.
Say it.
Probably move a second, discuss, all those in favor?
All right.
Close. I'm going to get you.
I had more friends, they have access, I don't know about stuff with your events. Yes, sir, I'm here. I was just waiting to be able to say.